San Carlos Planning Commission meeting to order. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can have a roll call, please. Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Bradley?
Present.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Present.
Chair Bergman?
Present.
All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on our future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. All right, I'd like to move on to the next. Do I need to close public comment? No, okay. All right, approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes?
I do. The minutes from July 18th, my only comment really was that I felt like in our discussion about the wireless telecommunications facility, we had talked quite a bit about it being particularly unattractive even by cell phone tower standards and that we were really concerned about Cal Waters landscaping versus how visible it is now. And I don't know that that was really encapsulated in the minutes, so I just wanted to make sure that somehow is. That's it.
Yes, and through the chair, if that's a pleasure of the commission staff, can certainly modify the minutes to reflect that in a bit more detail.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. That was a big issue. Anything else?
Not on those minutes. Move approval of the July 25 special meeting minutes with the change requested.
Oh, it was actually the July 18th minutes that I was referring to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wasn't at July 25th.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Well, actually, I have a change to 18th as well, which is that I'm down as saying the same thing twice on page two. And although I have been accused of being fairly repetitive, I don't usually say the exact same thing twice. Well, I do sometimes, but I don't think I did on July 18th, so I guess you can just try.
There's tape of this.
On page two. And so with that change and the change requested by Angela, I move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And for the record, I want to note that both of these minutes have telecommunications in them, which is why I made that mistake. And it's okay, dude. It's okay, man. And I'm guessing that Jill Lewis is going to be required to present it because for some reason, anyway.
Okay, did we approve just the one or do we still have to?
No, we still have to approve the other one. Does anyone have changes to July 25?
No changes.
Move approval to July 25.
Second.
Second. Second. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Epstein.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Epstein.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Is that it for the minutes? We only had two. I thought we were supposed to have, we only had two to go through?
I only had two in my.
Okay.
I only had two.
All right, the next item on the agenda is down as the affordable housing presentation. However, people have expressed interest in moving that after we do our regular business, so I think we will go ahead and do that. Do we have to make a motion or do we just move into the public hearing?
You can make a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we move the presentation to the end of the general business to public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the public hearing. The procedure for the public hearing, staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Therefore, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising all of those issues. You or someone else raise at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city add or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist the staff in preparing minutes. The first item on the agenda is Burton Park at 1001 Chestnut Streets, APN 051-321-190 and 051-301-010. Request for consideration of a conditional use permit amendment for proposed modification of an existing wireless telecommunications facility to increase the number of antennas on existing light standard from six to nine, three net new antennas and associated improvements. And does the staff have some presentations?
Staff does. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jill Lewis, and I'll present to you the request for consideration of a conditional use permit amendment to increase the number of T-Mobile antennas from six to nine at Burton Park. The existing light standard is located within Burton Park and owned by the City of San Carlos. The light pole is located on the edge of the baseball field near the parking lot for the youth center. The zoning for the site is PK Park, and the general land use designation is Park. The area surrounding the park is zoned RS6 and is made up of single-family residences. So to give you some history, in 2002, T-Mobile received approval to attach two antennas to the light pole. In 2005, T-Mobile received approval to attach one additional antenna to the light pole. In 2013, T-Mobile received approval to remove the three existing antennas and replace with six new antennas. And the proposal before you tonight is T-Mobile would add three new four-foot-tall antennas for a total of nine on the light pole. I want to point out to you a typo in my staff report on page three. It should reference that the new antennas are four feet tall, not eight feet tall. The height of the existing and new antennas is 60 feet, nine inches above grade. Three new remote radio units will also be added, as will one new ring mount to provide structural support for the new antennas. There's also a cabinet swap-out within the existing shelter. The RF study shows full compliance with FCC regulations for both carriers. AT&amp;T is the other carrier located on the pole. And signage will be posted at 35 feet above grade to inform workers of the exposure levels. In 2014, the FCC issued a report and order stating that wireless facilities that meet relevant criteria shall be granted by the approval body. So in this case, 20 feet would be the greater of the two measurements, which you see bolded in front of you, since the monopole is, or excuse me, the light standard is not increasing in width. So these are the existing versus proposed photo simulations. The facility, including the existing light pole and antennas, is pre-existing. T-Mobile is co-locating with its own existing antennas. The three new antennas do not project out any more than the existing. While the installation will be readily visible, it is already visible from public view. The light standard is 71 feet tall with two carriers' antennas already installed. The location of the new antennas is least visibly obtrusive alternative. So staff received no correspondence from property owners within a 300-foot radius, written or otherwise. I'm available for any questions you have for staff, and the applicant is also available should you have questions for her.
Any questions for staff?
I do.
Please go ahead.
Can I assume that the antennas approved in 2002, 2005, and 2013 have all been in compliance with the Accuscal and RF emission?
Yes.
Okay. And then have there been any known problems or complaints from the public?
No, none that I've heard of.
And then I think my second question might be for the applicant. Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Want to come up, please? Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, if you have your own presentation.
Do you have something you want to present?
No. My name is Gideon Barkatemi. I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile.
Okay.
So I have a question. We hear a lot of co-located cell phone tower applications, and I'm curious about different ways to screen the actual antennas. And I'm wondering, for example, I've seen poles painted green, but I'm wondering if the actual equipment, the actual antenna, can be painted green or would that interfere somehow with its usefulness as a?
No, that's definitely doable. Antennas can be painted any desirable color, so.
Great. And then I guess my question would be back to staff. Maybe this is a big-picture issue, and maybe it's not specific to this since it's an existing pole, but is it really that difficult to ask that we have these painted green, particularly if they're located by trees and it would blend better?
The commission can certainly ask the applicant, but because this is a co-located facility, it makes it more difficult to require that as a condition. But you can certainly have the discussion, and it could be that T-Mobile, you know, if it's relatively easy for them to do and if they want to be a good neighbor, maybe they might decide to do that.
I am asking that these be painted green, please.
That's something that we can do and probably condition in, if that's something that is how it would be.
That would be lovely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all I had.
Anyone else? No? All right, thank you, everyone. She can sit down. Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak on this issue? Please come up.
Good evening. My name is Arpika Fayan, and I have been living at 1513 Burton Avenue, near Burton Park. Will this be only at Burton Park? Because few months ago, they put a pole without my knowledge in front of my frontyard, and I was very upset because nobody had told me that there was going to be a pole. So I called City Hall, and then T-Mobile came and over eyes, and I don't know whoever came and took it out. So I think I would appreciate if somebody will let me know if anything is going to be put on my property.
They should be notified. I'm surprised that that happened. I'm sure that that wasn't approved through the city without, I mean, the city would have notified you, yeah. I don't know, to me, for this, definitely they would be notified if there's something like that was supposed to happen.
They should be, and I'm not quite sure about the structure that you're referring to, but for this particular application, it's a pre-existing light pole that already exists within the park, and we could even pull up some maps to kind of show you where it's located. I do know that some of the cabling equipment associated with AT&amp;T Wireless, sometimes those types of facilities are put along the sidewalk within the right-of-way, and those are overseen by the city's Public Works Division. So maybe if it's okay with you, I can get your name and address, and I can circle back with our Public Works Division to see if they are aware of any kind of proposals for equipment to be located in the front of your home or near the front of your home. We can definitely look into that for you.
Okay. Because I have been living here for 32 years, and this is the first time that something like this happened, and I would appreciate if, you know, I would be notified and I would have a say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? Okay, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Yeah, for this one, then we have to do the next one. I'm sorry, I'm still learning this.
Turn it.
Yes.
I move to close the public hearing on this item.
Give a second.
Second.
I have a roll call. Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Any discussion?
None.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, the only, I take that back. Since T-Mobile said we can condition it as a condition of approval, I would like to add that.
Go for it.
Okay, just add it. I guess maybe a...
Condition 22?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, wait, no, these are numbered incorrectly here.
Oh, yeah, there seems to be too many 19s.
23, 24, 25, so condition 26, is that right? 19.
Yeah, I think it would be 26. Simply that we...
A favorable motion?
Oh, I'm just saying that as the 26 condition, that it be, that the antennas and pole be painted green.
Do you want to make the motion and add the condition or?
Sure, yeah. Sorry, let me just get to motion page.
I think that's a good idea.
Page seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, does everybody, you don't, does everybody agree with that or you are all all right?
I'm fine with that. The applicant didn't seem that was going to be an issue, so.
Through the chair, can we, and maybe through Commissioner Harper-Peterson, can you clarify to staff exactly if it's just the equipment, the antennas and the associated equipment, or do you mean the entire pole? Because it is a city park pole, so we would want to check with Parks and Rec to make sure that they wouldn't have an objection to that if it is a pole. But I think what you're referring to is just the actual equipment?
I was referring to the equipment, but I would, I guess maybe I was under the assumption that the pole wouldn't be an issue to paint since the city owned it. But of course, that wouldn't be conditioned for this, but I would like to see it green.
And add subject to review?
Okay.
By the city's Park and Rec Division Department.
Yeah, that will be good. So that the antenna and pole be painted green, subject to city review. Is everybody okay with that before I make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I move that the Planning Commission approve T-Mobile's request for a conditional use permit amendment for installation of three new antennas with associated improvements at Burton Park, 1001 Chester Street, APNs 051-321-190, and 050-301-010, based on the required findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and is conditioned in the conditional use permit, with the additional condition, number 26, that the antennas and related equipment and the pole be painted green, subject to city review.
A second.
I second it.
And a roll call, please. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is 1525 San Carlos Avenue, APN 050-123-170. Consideration of a request for an amendment to a previously approved grading and dirt hall certificate for an approved 18-unit mixed-use development. Does that have a report?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you and good evening. I'm Laura Russell with the Planning Division. The request before you this evening is for an amendment to a dirt hall route for a previously approved project at 1525 San Carlos Avenue. All other aspects of the previous approval would remain unchanged. So as the Planning Commission will recall, on October 5, 2015, you approved a new mixed-use project. It includes 18 residential units and one commercial unit. The entitlements at that time included design review, a transportation demand management plan, grading and dirt hall certificate, and a protected tree removal permit. And on the right-hand side is the rendering of that project. So since October 2015, the project has been going through the plan check process, and it is now very close to building permit issuance. And during that same time period, other development projects have gone through plan check and/or have gone into active construction. Of note, the project at Cherry Chestnut is now in active construction. And so during this time period, the city has had a number of active development sites, and so we've been increasing coordination between all of the different contractors and developers and between the city departments. And I believe you're also aware, we've brought on the part-time project manager to help us oversee those construction sites. So as part of our, what's now a more routine process, we've been doing more coordination between the different project sites. So as part of that process, we were talking very specifically about the dirt hall route that had been approved for this project. And through that communication and coordination, based on the best information that's available now, almost a year later, the applicant and staff agree that it would be best to alter the dirt hall route for trucks specifically that are arriving at the site. So these are the empty trucks that would be coming on 101, exiting at Whipple, going down El Camino and left on San Carlos Avenue. So that part remains the same. The previously approved route had trucks turning left from San Carlos Avenue directly into the site with flaggers present for traffic control. So now staff recommends that the route be changed to what you see here on the screen and included in your staff report. So from San Carlos Avenue, they would turn left on Chestnut, which is a stoplight, and it has a dedicated left-turn lane. Then they would proceed around the block on Cherry and Cedar, turn right on San Carlos Avenue, and right into the project site.
Chestnut has a dedicated left-hand turn?
It does.
Light?
Well, it's a dedicated left-turn lane.
Oh, okay.
So it's not a protected turn, but it's a lane.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, and I was like, I've driven that forever and never noticed that light because it's not there. Okay.
You're speeding right through it.
Yeah. That is also a distinct possibility, Angela. Thanks for ratting me out.
And then the route leaving the site would remain unchanged, which is the very simple turn right out of the site, right on San Carlos Avenue, and proceed down to Burton to leave the community. So staff sent legal notice for this public hearing to all owners within 300 feet. And as you know, we also send notice to the residences on the local or collector streets that are along the dirt hall route. We received one email, which was related specifically to environmental review and not to the dirt hall route, so I did not include that in your packet, and we just did explain a little bit more to that resident about the environmental review process. So the draft amended certificate is included as attachment one to your staff report. It shows the new text, which is shown in bold. All of the other aspects of the certificate are proposed to remain. If the Planning Commission wishes to approve the amended route, this is the motion that you would make, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, Laura, just one question. Cherry Chestnut, all the dirt hauling is done on that, excavating for that project site, correct?
I checked with the building official today, and he said they're pretty close to done. He said they, he estimates that they'll be done within a month. So if there's overlap with this project, it would be very minimal.
Good.
Was there ever any discussion of just going straight up Whipple to Alameda and then down Alameda and then down San Carlos Avenue? I mean, I know it's a little bit longer, but aren't those streets fairly narrow that they're going? I don't know. I mean, I'm not going to change it here and now, but I mean, maybe for the next project next door, I don't know what hauling route they had, but if we're going to be changing that one, to maybe ask staff to consider going to Alameda.
What we can do then is talk to the public work staff about analyzing that, and maybe we can include that in the analysis that we provide to you. In this particular case, there was concern about how the hauling was going to go related to the Cherry Chestnut project, and it has gone, I think, generally quite smoothly. And so there is a feeling amongst the public work staff that this route is appropriate for this project. The adjacent project at 1501 San Carlos doesn't have a significant amount of grading, so they don't have a grading and dirt hall permit or they don't have a big route, they just have a couple of truck trips. It's less than the amount that comes to you for review. So it's actually through coordination with that adjacent project that these issues kind of came to light when we were coordinating those two projects together. But I take your point, and we'll talk about it with the public work staff in the future.
Any other questions?
You have answered my main question. Thank you.
Okay.
Which was it? What was it?
I was curious how the coordination had come about and how the route had actually been decided on, and you answered that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
So the applicant's here. Do you want to make a statement or you're just here for questions? Okay, you're just here for questions. We have any questions for the applicant?
None.
Okay, is anyone in the public who wants to speak on this item? Please come on up.
Let me guess, you live on Cherry.
I live on Cherry.
Yeah.
We'll take it, it's fine.
Somebody will take it from you.
These were your notes. Did you mean to give me the speaker slip? I could read it. I mean, your handwriting is fairly good, frankly.
My name is Nathan Dabbin. I live at 1555 Cherry Street. I just wanted to voice some opposition to the change in the route. Cherry Street at the 1500 block is actually fairly narrow. If you drive on it during the day, it's one car only at a time, so my wife's there with her baby, and you know, there's, it's already a lot of traffic back up there. If multiple cars come in at the same time, I'm worried about large trucks coming through there. I did have a concern about, there's already a lot of large trucks going in and out of the area for the 1501 project. I hear the comment that we don't think there's going to be overlap with the hauling, but I think the route's actually a little bit different when you think about 1501 Cherry versus this. The route for 1501 Cherry comes down Chestnut and directly into the 1501 gate. What we're actually asking trucks to do here is like make a full turn on Cherry and then again onto Cedar Street. And then my last point is I think there are a lot of other alternate routes that aren't as narrow in the streets, specifically the Alameda-Las Vegas route. I think there are a lot of ways to get there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hard not to like him when he agrees with me, huh?
Anyone else in the public?
Um, no.
Okay. All right, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Does her second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion?
So then, I'm sorry, just one more question for staff based on public comment. So Laura, is Public Works taking public feedback into consideration then when coming up and coordinating these dirt hall routes? Do you have any idea?
Yes. Yes, to the degree that we're receiving those comments and we collaborate with them on the routes. So when we hear this feedback from the Planning Commission and from the public, we are taking it back. And then they're analyzing that in light of, you know, the technical information that they have in front of them in regards to the traffic and routes and the conditions of roads and things like that. So it is part of the conversation.
Okay, so they would have looked at Cherry despite its narrowness during the day and have, and have considered that and feel that this route outweighs the cons of going down Cherry?
Yes. It was part of the conversation a year ago when we were discussing the previous route. And so that's why this recommendation is based on the best information that's available to staff now, which is additional data, additional information from a year ago.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just know how narrow Cherry is, that, you know, it really only will take one car at a time. There's cars parked on either side. It's very congested. I guess I'm not understanding the rationale. Can you help explain the rationale better?
In talking about it with the public work staff a year ago... In talking about it with the Public Works staff a year ago, those exact concerns came up. And, you know, there was a lot of concern about how, that the intensity of the truck traffic would be and the amount of hauling that was taking place, since there were some larger projects than the city had seen previously in those constrained conditions. And as the, the construction for the Cherry Chestnut project has proceeded, and we've been able to see how we can use the, like, kind of the project management tools that we have, the project manager out in the field to help facilitate that, I think the feeling has been that it does work, when there was a concern a year ago that it may not work. And so it's, it's based on that information, that they think that it's wide enough and that they think they can work within their construction management parameters to ensure that it would be safe.
Why don't we just give staff the discretion to either let them use this route, or use the David Silverman-Alameda to San Carlos route, or both, if they choose to?
Wouldn't you have to notice that?
I think because that's a significant difference in the route, I think, you know, probably would be a best practice to notice the people that would be along that route then, since our noticing requirements require us to notify people at the public hearing of the route itself, not just within 300 feet of the site.
That does raise a question, though. So say that we approve it as written, it goes through, and then they find a problem while they're doing the project. What are their, do we, do they stop dirt haul and then renotice? Or how does, how does the staff slash company doing the construction alter that?
So we'd have a couple of steps along the way. The first thing we're going to do, honestly, is look at the noticing that we did previously. A lot of times, the 300-foot notice is going to pick up the significant residences along the local and collector streets, and we can be assured that those folks have been notified of the public hearing of the project, and of the, you know, inadvertently of the route, so to speak. They've been notified that it exists. If there was a significant number of people, I think, that were outside of that route, then we would have to decide whether there was some reasonable discretion, or whether it would have to be renoticed. I think these are the issues that are coming up with a number of, you know, kind of larger development projects. And I think the first one we've seen that has had to come back for this reason.
Thank you.
Can you just clarify, what was the route before the suggested route?
It was coming down San Carlos Avenue and turning left directly into the site across traffic, which, without a turn lane, which would have required very intensive traffic control. So you have to stop traffic in the opposite direction in order for trucks to cross. Correct. Correct. There's also, it's right where the median ends, so it's also a very significant physical constraint instead of staging that.
God, I just really hate having to
Through the chair.
... through the neighborhood like that. I mean, I understand the danger of crossing the median in San Carlos Avenue, but, I mean, it's just, it's not good. Go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair. The other item that went into staff's consideration of this is the relative amount of hauling, and so it's 1,560 cubic yards. And so that's relatively small. Honestly, I was talking about it with the building official, and so that's the other reason why this was felt, you know, to be an acceptable route.
How many truckloads is that many?
130 approximately.
130?
Yeah.
I see your, I see your concern, and I think we've all, we've all raised it in some way or another, though it does seem that the original route is worse. Can you explain it? Yeah.
I'm quite shocked that actually, that we approved that route.
I think the same thing.
I think we were more focused on the actual project and didn't really look at the route too closely because it's, that's dangerous.
When's this project supposed to start? I mean, I don't know, is it worthwhile to see about the other Alameda route? I mean, how much time do we have?
We're actually very close to building permit issuance on this project, and so they would actually probably be waiting for this approval and appeal period to end and be pretty actively ready to go into construction, and certainly the developer can speak to that additionally, but we're very close to permit issuance. And so if the Planning Commission had an interest in doing that, maybe we could consider some option that we might approve this for some limited amount of time, or maybe evaluate it in some way and report back, such that we could give them an opportunity to go into construction and assess any issues that may come up.
I don't want to stop construction, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with it, if there's a possible better way of doing it. I'm just really sensitive to that, that block in Cherry. I don't know what other people think.
Well, we can certainly approve this and then ask staff to look at an alternate route and bring it back to the next meeting if they believe it's feasible.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
We could do that. We could analyze it and review it with our Public Works staff, and we could report back on the conditions, or we could renotice it for a public hearing if there's, you know, Public Works opinion that that route is feasible and potentially better for residents, and still technically feasible.
I'm more comfortable with that than just a blanket approval without evaluating that route. You know, I'm sure Public Works probably has a perfectly good reason for not using that route, but without knowing it, it just seems like there's a blank in the information, so, okay. All right. I'm sorry.
Want to reopen?
Oh, do I need to reopen the public hearing?
Close it.
Yeah, we closed it. So we were in discussion, so let me, does someone make a motion to?
I'm going to reopen the public hearing on the side.
Seven.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Sorry for making you guys go through that. Yeah, I would just say, it sounded like you guys were kind of going that direction early on, and, you know, if there's a way to give staff a little leeway to make decisions, I mean, we could still notice the public, but, I mean, this is kind of staff-driven thing. I think it's a better route than what was there before, but, you know, probably if we put more effort into looking at all the different options, maybe we could find a different one, but, you know, the, the process of noticing and waiting a few weeks to get on the commission calendar, and then the appeal period, you know, would be pretty, you know, that'd be, at this point, really tough for us to handle, but, you know, if there is a way that it could be managed at a staff level, I think those are the people that have the most information and would probably make the best decision.
We are not preventing you from starting work. We're approving the, and there's no way, if they have to notice, they're basically noticing our meeting, so...
Right, I'm not, you sound like you guys already had a decision that was in my favor, so that's great, but I was just saying, if
Yes, it is. Staff, you can always seize from the jaws of victory if you like.
No, that's not what I'm trying to do, but...
You can fall on your sword.
All right, thanks, guys.
I mean, if you actually have another suggestion, but we can't, I mean, there's, we have to approve the dirt haul route, so if it's going to come back, it has to come back. There's no way for us to, I don't think.
Quick question while you're up there in W, you reopened it. When do you anticipate breaking ground?
Probably within a couple of weeks.
Okay.
I mean, do staff believe that we could
No.
delegate the dirt haul decision to staff in the event that, I mean, I just don't know how.
I just can't see how they'd do it unless those people were already noticed.
Yeah, I think, I think the way that we proposed it initially was probably going to be the only way.
All right, so I guess, is there a motion to close the public hearing again?
Submoved.
Seven.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, any more comments, or do we agree to go back to what we were considering, which is, we approve it, and then, but you will look at other routes and then give us a status on what we come up with? Is that what we agreed?
Yeah, basically, we're approving the item as is, but giving direction to staff to explore an alternate route, including the one that we discussed, and if it's feasible and Public Works approves of it, and it can be brought back without delaying construction, bring it on back. Please.
All right, I entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission grant approval of the amended grading and dirt haul certificate associated with the previously approved 18-unit mixed-use development located at 1525 San Carlos Avenue, APN 050123170.
Your second?
Second.
Any roll call, please?
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is going back to number six, which is the presentation on affordable housing.
I saw her practicing, so timed it, too.
She's practicing standing?
Yeah, it's tough work.
I'm Nell Seelander, Economic Development Coordinator, and I also work on housing programs and projects for the city of San Carlos. I'm here this evening to provide you a bit of a primer on affordable housing in San Carlos, so we'll discuss a bit of terminology, housing policy related to the city's BMR ordinance, the results of that ordinance, and then also what we're working on next. So what does affordable really mean? Just to kick things off, affordable in this context really has two meanings. There's little a affordable, which refers to the amount of a household's income that is spent on housing. We like to think of little a affordable as a household spending 30% or less of their income on housing. If that household is spending 30 to 50% of their income on housing, they're really considered moderately housing cost burdened. And if they're spending greater than 50% of their household income on housing, they're severely housing cost burdened. Big A affordable refers to housing that's affordable, little a affordable, to a specific range of households. Generally, those are households making 120% of the area median income or less. And then finally, below market rate. What does that really mean? It's synonymous with big A affordable housing. We can use those two interchangeably. When we talk about below-market-rate housing, we're talking about housing affordable to households making 120% of the median income or less. So this table shows the 2016 income limits for San Mateo County, with income categories on the Y-axis, household size on the X-axis, and these are the upper limit thresholds to qualify for below-market-rate housing targeted to the various income categories. You'll notice at the top, where it says effective 52416, that the area median income is $107,700 a year, and then median income is always based on a family or a household of four. These thresholds are set by the state, but really implemented at a county level. So this is a reproduction of the document that the county puts out, but it's based on state, state figures. So now for a look at what below-market rents mean in the context of market-rate rents. First, we'll look at a two-person household living in a one-bedroom, and then a four-person household living in a three-bedroom. So we're using San Mateo rental and income data because it's a bit more reliable than just looking at San Carlos, which is a pretty small sample size, particularly for rental units. And also, 60% of San Carlos households are one- and two-person households. So this is really relevant to what we're talking about here, folks that could fit in a one-bedroom. This magenta line shows the median rental list price for a one-bedroom in San Mateo County over the last five years. You can see the steady increase in the price of rent over time, really peaking this year at $2,648 a month.
For a one-bedroom?
For a one-bedroom. That's the median. This turquoise line here that just came up shows the amount of rent that is little a affordable to a two-person household making the median income over the same five years. So that's a household that's spending 30% of their income on housing, and today, that two-person household would earn $86,000 a year and can afford just about $2,100 a month for housing. That's $500 less than one-bedrooms generally rent for in this county. So who makes this income?
So when we're talking about $86,000, are we talking about $86,000 net?
Gross. Gross. Gross.
Okay.
Yeah, so affordability numbers are based on gross income, it's not net, so, so really net, it's probably more like 40%, 50%.
Okay.
It's, it's just the convention that's used.
Okay.
So this household, this two-person household might be an insurance agent making $35,000 a year, an administrative assistant at a software company making $50,000 a year, or even a single-parent teacher with six to seven years' experience on the job and a dependent child. So that's sort of who might make up a two-person household that makes about $86,000 a year. Lastly, this blue line demonstrates what a very low-income household can afford to spend on housing, and a very low-income household is categorized as a household earning 50% of the median income for their household size. So this household, right now, earns $49,000 a year and can afford $1,230 a month to spend on rent, and that's less than half of what it costs to rent a one-bedroom here.
They just can't live here.
That's basically what it's saying, is if you can't make it, you can't live, because I don't know of any place that only charges $1,200 for rent.
Yeah, and then there's all the sort of alternative rents, you know, renting a room somewhere, or home sharing, or something like that. But yes, it's pretty far out of reach.
Getting teacher, that, where they must be living, I don't know.
So now we're going to look at a four-person household in a three-bedroom rental. So 67% of San Carlos's housing stock are two- and three-bedrooms, so this is also really relevant to our market. And this could be a single-family home for rent that's about this size, or, or a multifamily apartment. So the median list price for a three-bedroom in San Mateo County is $4,200 a month. And this increase that you see here from 2012 to 2016 is a 45% increase in the cost of a three-bedroom. So just as a really staggering point of comparison I came across today, the median list price for a three-bedroom in Manhattan has increased 13.5% over this same time horizon, so quite, their rents are increasing less steeply, as I'm sure. So the median household income in San Mateo County, or a family of four, so right now we're looking at a family of four, are earning $107,700 a year. And that household can afford, in 2016, about $2,600 a month on housing expenses. That's $1,600 less than three-bedrooms are renting for in this county. And then for a very low-income household of four, earning 50% of the median income, their ability to afford rent is even further out of reach. And a four-person, very low-income household would earn about $61,000 a year, and can only comfortably afford $1,500 a month in rent. So for a quick look at homeownership, and I think this chart is particularly important for San Carlos, since so many of the residential units in San Carlos are owner-occupied, it's, you know, a great community, and part of that is because of the longevity of, that's created by homeownership. So this graph charts the past 20 years of median sales prices of all homes in San Carlos. So it's a little bit of a blunt tool, because you're lumping in condos with, you know, a six-bedroom home, but it gives you a sense of the scale. And then the orange line below is the maximum purchase price for the median household, so a family of four earning the median income. What could they afford over the same timeframe? Now, we're being really generous here. The maximum purchase price we're calculating assumes, using, you know, the national average interest rate for a 30-year fixed-rate mortgage, a 20% down payment, which is often unattainable in this region... in this region, very good credit, and little other debt, so probably not a big student loan payment on top of a housing payment. When we calculate the purchase price for a below-market-rate condo, we use less generous assumptions, so that we're really protecting the purchase price and keeping it low enough to truly be affordable. So to put these assumptions in context, here you see in 2016 that the median household can probably only afford around $600,000 in purchase price. A moderate-income, three-bedroom, BMR-designated condo would sell for about $460, so even below that for a moderate-income category. But that's still about a million dollars below market. So I'd like to lastly point out that when housing prices last peaked in 2007, the difference between the median home price in San Carlos and the maximum affordable purchase price for the median household was $480,000, give or take a few thousand. But today, that delta has grown to over $800,000. So there's a pretty staggering difference between what the median household can afford and what homes are selling for in San Carlos today. So now I'm going to walk you through the city's policy and what that's designed to do. So the city has had an inclusionary zoning policy or ordinance since 1991, meaning that residential developments of a certain size were required to build some level of affordable units within their projects. This policy was amended in '93, 2004, and then most recently in 2011, following the zoning code update. So we're only going to talk about 2011 because it's what we know best, and it's what we're implementing now. And that's Chapter 18.16 of the municipal code. Oh, sorry. So currently, new residential projects and residential additions of 1,000 square feet or more are required to build or pay an impact fee or an in- lieu fee. So that's a lot of "or"s, but we're just going to walk through all of those "or"s right now. And single-family homes that build an accessory dwelling unit that's compliant with our second-unit requirements, those are exempt from the BMR requirement. Okay, so who builds? For-sale residential developments of seven units or more must designate 10% of the units as moderate income and 5% for low income, unless the developer demonstrates that doing so would be economically infeasible. But right now, with the economy the way it is, you've noticed the projects that have come before you, most are building one or two units as required. So I will give this one caveat, which is why doesn't this apply to rental developments? And that's because of a California Court of Appeals case known as Palmer versus the City of LA. And I'm no housing attorney, so I'm not going to weigh into that, but basically, just so you know, for the sake of this conversation, in order to comply with the case law, we cannot require rental developments to build on-site. The developer may choose to, but we cannot require it as we do with a condo development.
Do we require them to pay an in- lieu fee?
Yep, they do pay a fee.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to...
I didn't hear that. Would you say it one more time? From the very beginning, from just that last part?
Oh, so a rental development, we cannot require them to build the units on-site.
To build them on-site?
To build the BMR units in the same project.
Oh, okay.
So they pay the fee. Rental developers will pay the fee, whereas the for-sale developers are required to build the units on-site. So I've heard that fractions can often come up with this, right? If 15% of seven, or eight, or nine units is required to be affordable, what do you do with a fractional unit? In this case, in our ordinance, if the fraction is less than one-half, then you round down, and then there's also this partial unit fee that's applied. So with the example of eight units, 15% of eight is 1.2, the developer would build one unit and then pay this fractional fee based on the average unit size. If the fraction is greater than or equal to one-half, then you round up, and no partial unit fee is applied. So a 13-unit development would round up from 1.95 to 2 and build the two units.
I have a quick question for you before you go on. So, you know, we have this 10% ordinance, but what's the need? I mean, of all the people that need housing, I mean, it's probably more than 10% of the people out there, right? I mean, how many, I mean, how are we mapping to the real need?
So the R in "in lieu" fee, our BMR ordinance, is done, or is based off of a NEXIS study, which is required in order to adopt such a fee or requirement from 2010, based on 2009 construction data. So need is growing faster, to some extent, than our ordinance is keeping pace with, but we've had it on the books far longer than many other communities. So we're sort of... It's a tough call, basically.
So does that, I mean, is there any updated study that's being worked on? We're working off of, I mean, we saw the NEXIS, or the difference of price points, really 2010 was a down market.
Yeah.
It was a recovering market. I mean, so to use that data to where we're at right now, it's an extreme difference.
It does seem to be out of alignment.
So is, what's being done, or is anything being done in order to kind of make those numbers a little more real?
Well, so let me get to the end, where we talk about how much money we have and how we're trying to spend it, because part of this is spending the money we have, and then another part of, we can only, we also need to spend it. And so right now, we're working pretty hard on trying to spend the dollars.
We want more money, is what I'm saying, so...
So talk about that.
More we have said, we want more.
And council has directives to research a commercial and get fees which would apply to commercial uses, so that's an area where there would be more money if you're looking for the more, the answer to that question. But that's sort of a whole other topic. Okay, so the BMR plan, projects that have a requirement to build the units are required to submit a below-market-rate housing plan for review and approval by you. The BMR plan must include a number of items, but the key ones are really the location and size of the unit, to make sure that they're commensurate with the market-rate units, the income levels that they're pegged at, whether or not the units will be offered for sale or for rent. The developer can make that decision, and that's what determines the level of affordability. And then, if applicable, a developer could suggest an alternative means of meeting the BMR requirement. So perhaps they have another parcel adjacent that they'd like to build all of the units on. That's something that they could propose to the city for a planning commission review and approval. And then lastly, if a developer is meeting the requirement by building the units in the development on-site, they are able to request an incentive, as long as those units are compliant with our requirement. So an incentive, as I just mentioned, can be any number of incentives listed in Chapter 18.17 of the municipal code, but the most common ones are probably the city density bonus, which allows a developer to build one additional market-rate unit for every additional BMR low-income unit provided beyond the base requirement. So if they're, if they want to, if they're required to build one unit, that can't suffice for getting that density bonus, they've got to build another unit. There's also flexible parking standards, related specifically to the BMR units constructed. And then probably most common is the flexible setback allowance, and there are specific findings in this chapter of the municipal code that must be met in order to grant that So who pays? The city collects in-lu fees, affordable house below-market-rate in-lu fees, from developers of for-sale condo projects of between two and six units, or from those developers that demonstrate that building the units on-site would be financially infeasible. So it's an in-lu fee because it's in lieu of building the units on-site. Then there's the impact fee, the affordable housing impact fee. And this is paid by all rental developers, unless they opt into building the units. It's paid by single-family homes and residential additions of 1,000 square feet or more. So this is sort of catching everyone else. And our fee, which makes it a little bit hard to compare to other cities, is based on the average square footage, or the average unit size. So if all the units in a development are 1,000 square feet, that makes it simple, the average unit size is 1,000 square feet. And then there's also a different fee for every single size of development, so a different fee for two units versus 20 units. So I'm going to give you a couple examples, just so you can see the magnitude of the So a nine-unit multifamily rental project, for example, is 530 Walnut, which was recently approved, and the average square footage of a unit in this proposed building is 939 square feet. And the cumulative impact fee for a nine-unit project is $243.42, that's $243.42. So those two numbers multiplied by each other, and their total fee is about $230,000, just a bit under. And this is something that's calculated just before building permit issuance and paid at that point, and that's because the average unit size can fluctuate a tiny bit as the design gets more refined. So for a two-unit mixed-use project, 1312 Laurel Street, the average square footage of the residential units is 1,667 square feet. The impact fee for a two-unit project is $15.83 an average square foot, so that's an impact fee of about $26,000. And then for a new single-family home, this is 171 Coronado, which was approved last summer, I believe, and at just over 4,000 square feet...
Recognize that.
Yeah. This was a difficult site, right? And we wanted to give you a brand-new project on a vacant lot.
A driveway.
Yes.
Is this the turnaround?
So if there was already a home on this site, let's say there was a 1,600-square-foot home, and that was demolished, and the 4,000-square-foot home built in its place, you would pay the fee on the difference. Okay, but this is brand-new, so you're paying on the whole, the whole square footage, and this would be about $11,500. Okay, so the results of this...
Which, actually, when you think of a $4-million home.
It's, yeah, I don't have anything really to compare it to, other than maybe like the sewer fee, which I think is half that, or something like that. So, units built. Since 1991, since the city adopted its inclusionary zoning policy, 88 units have been built, 29 are in the pipeline, meaning they've been entitled and are either under construction or will be soon, and about 60% of those are units. So this includes the 20 units at Transit Village, or the four units at Cherry Chestnut, the three units at 777 Walnut Street. Since 2005, the city has collected $2.7 million in fees, but we're anticipating $3.5 million when Wheeler Plaza pulls its building permits. So all of a sudden, it will double that fund. So in addition to those monies, we also have housing asset funds that belonged to the redevelopment agency. So now we are obligated to spend those as well, and that's closer to $7 million. So all in, without Wheeler, we've got about a hair under $10 million in housing funds that are allocated for very specific income brackets.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? Can you break those down? I don't see the 10 million.
So 2.7 million has been collected since 2005, and these are impact fees, so this is just to, the mission behind these is to provide a range of housing to a range of incomes. The housing asset fund, I didn't particularly list because it's much more limited. It's really for extremely low-income and very-low-income households, and there's a timeline under which that must be spent or encumbered. So it's much more limited in what it can be spent on.
You mean timeline as of the time of the project, construction of the project?
Correct. It has to be...
Two years, or something like that.
Yeah, we have to start encumbering it by 2019, so it's a more accelerated timeline. These funds are the city's, and they're a bit more flexible. So using these funds that the city has, the intention is to, and council has directed staff to consider the redevelopment of 817 Walnut Street, which is a very small multifamily building that the city owns, down where Walnut dead-ends into the Bancini's parking lot, and that South Plaza parking lot that the city owns. So we're exploring that now. We're also in negotiations to purchase other property for the purposes of developing affordable housing. And then we also, on an annual basis, release a Notice of Funding Availability, a NOFA, to support San Carlos-based, and then also regional programs that serve San Carlos residents for affordable housing projects and different programs. And that, council just increased the NOFA amount from $100,000 annually to $150,000 annually. So that's a competitive grant that gets divvied up to various housing organizations. And that's all that I've got for you.
Just a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Mona.
Yeah, thank you very much. Summarized all our questions of the last three years and 20 minutes, so thank you. How do you define financially feasible? Is there a definition of that?
So I haven't personally been involved with any of these, so I can't say, on this project, this was financially infeasible, but essentially, it's demonstrating that perhaps you couldn't get the funding you needed in order to build the project, or it didn't meet your investors' requirements for profit, or some sort of...
Very lax, is what you're saying?
I wouldn't say very lax. It has to be something meaningful, saying, if required to build the units, this project would not get built. And so then you're making the decision about whether or not the project should get built. Either way, they're paying the fee. It doesn't happen often.
What, let's see, what other question did I have? Anybody can jump in if they have any other questions.
No, my question was similar. I know it's happened at least once, because it happened on the single-family housing 11.
That's going to be cutting on San Carlos.
Right.
I remember that, yeah.
So I'm not sure about the particulars of that. I didn't handle that review.
Yeah, and I've since had discussions with other developers that pretty much told me what developers can stomach and what they can't, and I called foul on that one. So I think it just depends on, yeah, depends on the negotiation. So there's, I think you said there's like, what, 66 or 88 units that have been built?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight units have been built, and then how many are in the pipeline?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. It just seems to me that we're just not even, it seems to me like there's a lot more percentage of the population that's going to need this support. And I guess personally, one thing that, I know you can't do anything about it because you didn't, you know, settle the law case, right? But I think it's, I like it when we can have the below-market-rate in with the actual affordable, you know, the market-rate housing, because I think if you start putting below-market-rate or just, you know, clusters of lower-market housing, it has, I don't know if it would happen in San Carlos, but that's how, you know, neighborhoods start to sort of fall by the wayside when they don't have the income that they need coming in, like I said, I don't own the land in San Carlos. But I have always not liked it when the developers pay the in-lu fee. I'd rather have the actual units. But I, you know, I don't think we have a choice on that, because I'd like it interspersed, because then the community can actually, you know, manage that, you know, and it doesn't affect the quality of the community. But that's just my own opinion.
And I think many of us have raised that concern at one point or another, whether it was Transit Village looking at the alternate BMR plan, or in situations that you and I just referenced recently near Carlmont, that the whole point of in-community affordable housing is that the residents don't feel separated, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's my concern as well. I have another question, I guess, about... I have another question, I guess about demonstrating the economic infeasibility, because I feel like when we've had the discussion, we've never been able to force the point. So they either, the developer either gets to, either gets to build them, or they get to pay the in-loof fee, and we really haven't seemed to have much say in the matter. Do we get to decide whether it's economically infeasible for them? Who decides that?
Give me two seconds. I just quoted this to one of my coworkers earlier today, but there is a...
I want to make sure, Stefan Wheeler, wasn't it the recommendation of the city that they pay the in-loof fee?
I don't, I couldn't tell you the specifics on that. I don't recall. I mean, I just wasn't involved in that level of detail, that level of discussion.
I think that was said at one of the public hearings, because I think we asked the question, and I just, and I guess I had a question, why we would, why we would do that instead of have them actually, since those are for sale units, why we would have them do that instead of build the units as part of the development? And you can get back to me at some other time.
I would like to. I think it would be helpful for the commission to understand the details.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, they did say it was financially infeasible to do that, so the in-loof fee was better off for them.
And...
And I think that's how this kind of discussion, on a larger scale, was questioned. So my only comments is kind of what I made earlier, too, is, you know, I would gladly pay 2010 prices to anyone, based off of today's prices. So the question comes up, and we've had this discussion, too, on parking and loo, all these and loos. You know, if you're not keeping up with the metric of value, then it almost seems like the city just doesn't get what they actually need. I mean, the need, the difference is so great right now, that, you know, I think it's to the best, to the city's best interest to try to update that information. And so I guess my question is, is that even on the table anywhere, on updating the metric used to determine the in-loof fee? Because we're talking 2000, I think you said that it was 2010's numbers, correct?
So...
Or even before that.
2009 construction data, 2010 access data is what I have.
So I'm, I don't know of a specific plan to update the residential one, but as I mentioned, council's directed staff to look into a commercial linkage fee, which would be a completely different source of money, and maybe more appropriately aligned as construction of commercial uses, what brings in more employees needing more housing. So there's, I think there's a consideration now for, should it be all on residential, or is it sort of a brighter, a broader pool of folks paying into it? So, but that's a councilable discussion that's, I believe, will be happening soon.
What do your, what is, I see your department planned to try to address the gap? Is there, are there, is there, I mean, we have what we're doing now, are there, what are the future plans to try to close the gap better?
I mean, really, it's just using the funds that we have in order to build as many units as we can build. So the biggest constraint is acquiring property on which to build them. So we're negotiating now to try to acquire some property, and then get those units built as quickly as possible with the resources that we have. Because we're in a good position, there are a lot of cities that don't have financial resources to build housing right now. We have those, and then competitive tax credit financing and things like that that's available to affordable housing projects, having a local contribution really helps your chances. So we're in a good position, now we just are working on building.
I have a question for the zoning, because I can't, I don't have the entire zoning map memorized, but some of the commercial, not commercial, but industrial properties south of El Camino, like between American down to, let's say, Whipple. I mean, those are those, you know, that's largely industrial, but does that allow for any housing in there? I mean, you know, where most of those businesses are?
Are you asking if the zoning allows for that, is that your?
So all of our industrial zoning districts do not allow housing specifically. I mean, it's, it would be against our general plan policy. So it's a policy decision to preserve those areas as being industrial, commercial, office-oriented, sometimes with conditional use permit requirements, but no residential.
Yeah, I was just wondering, from a room standpoint, if you were, if it made sense, this is just, I'm just talking out loud, like, if it made sense to allow for artist lofts, or some kind of type of housing on top of a business, or something. I don't know, it's just, because it is, land is at such a premium, it's something I've thought about. But we haven't solved it today, and I don't want to keep people, like, just because of that, but that's something that I've often wondered.
I just have a clarification about the commercial linkage fee that you mentioned. Is that specifically for commercial developments that are bringing employees into the area, or does that mean any development coming in? I guess I'm just curious.
So the way it's applied, I'll give you what, how it's applied in other cities, because we don't have one now, and it's just beginning to come up and really be considered. So in other communities, it's applied on a per-square-foot basis. So it's based on the square footage of the proposed use.
Regardless of what the proposed use is?
It's usually tied specifically to the type of use. So is it commercial office, or is it a restaurant, or is it a hotel, or is it, you know, oftentimes nonprofits are exempt, or very small spaces, let's say it's a 3,000-square-foot space, that would be exempt. So it really, it can be quite tailored to the community, and sort of what the needs and the type of land uses are. So you could expect it to be different for, within the commercial category, different types of commercial uses.
So a commercial linkage fee wouldn't at all include something like Transit Village that is a housing development?
Well, in my, for the commercial use.
I see. Thank you. That helps me a lot.
And just to answer the question about, you know, who decides about the financial infeasibility. So I'll just point out that in Chapter 18 dot 16 dot 070, which is about alternatives, so alternatives to meeting the BMR requirement, Paragraph 6 describes that sort of economic infeasibility. And then Section B of that same chapter relates to findings, and that the decision-making body for the first approval may approve, conditionally approve, or reject any alternative proposed by the builder as part of the BMR plan. So for Transit Village, I believe the first decision-making body was council, and so they provided the waiver for the, for the, or the reduction. They proposed an alternative, which was 10% affordable, as opposed to 15% affordable. Or for Wheeler Plaza, for example, that was also handled differently.
I mean, that goes to, what I'm really trying to get at is, where is our authority around this to require certain things? And it sounds like there isn't much. Either the council makes the decision on economic feasibility slash infeasibility of these alternative plans, or, or that's that.
It depends. It depends. It sounds like, and I wasn't here, because I was recused, but it sounds like this body had the ability to determine feasibility for 2011, so.
And don't get me wrong, I actually think we approved the infeasibility pretty accurately. I'm just curious whether we actually made that decision.
So, I'm sorry, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, so I just wanted to confirm with Nell. So the way the ordinance reads is that it gives the authority to the decision-making body that's approving the project.
Yes.
So in the context of 2011, which is a planning commission decision, that decision would have been coupled in with your entitlements for, associated with that project as well. So if it comes to the planning commission, then you would have the authority. But if it otherwise goes to the council, then the decision authority is deferred to the council.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
So I'm going to sound like a broken record here, again. To me, it seems logical to up, I mean, we have the code, right? We have the method of determining what that in-loof fee is. We just have really old data. And to me, I understand that the city council's going to be looking at the linkage to the commercial aspect of that, but we have the residential aspect of that. We just need that information updated, to be closer in line with where the market is. I'm not sure what that cost is to update that information, but, you know, I would think that it would be to the city's best interest to update that information. You know, I mean, we have a situation where the prices have risen so rapidly, yet we're still working off of data that's really, really old. And, you know, if we're going to go through the cost of looking at another linkage, why don't we also go through the cost of updating what's already in the code? I mean, that's just my, that's my feeling, is, you know, I mean, it, I mean, you just, and it's really prevalent with the presentation that you did, because, you know, like you're pointing out, the gap is just so huge. And it's primarily huge, especially when it comes to the in-loof fee, because we're working off of old data. You know, cost of construction's gone up, marketability, those places have gone up. So to me, it would just make sense to, you know, I had this, I think I mentioned this too, when it comes to the parking in-loof fee. We don't have an updated number for that as well. Real estate prices go up, you know, and they have gone up dramatically. So even if we're working off of 2013's figures, or 14's figures, they're going to be much, much different than the ones that we're working off of. So, I mean, if it's just, you know, I think the city council's going to be seeing this presentation as well, correct? And they're probably watching me right now, and I might get a couple texts later, but... I mean, I think it'd be important to look at that. I think we've mentioned it a couple times now. You know, as a body that looks at a lot of these applications, I think it would be, again, to the benefit of the city, and hopefully closing some of those gaps. Just my thoughts.
Can we make a formal recommendation, or recommendation, whether it be to your committee, or to the city council, or to...
Not, it's not a janitor's for that.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is, all right, I'm sorry. Okay.
We appreciate all the comments received here, and certainly, you know, we can take that back, you know, within the, you know, within our department, and talk through that amongst ourselves as colleagues, and share it with the director as well.
I just make an observation that although Nell did a very job, a very nice job making this simple, this is not a simple issue. It's very, very complicat, I'm talking, I'm not talking about the regional housing crisis, that's a complicated problem as well, and we're not going to build enough houses in San Carlos to fix the regional housing crisis, although we should certainly do our part. But I would expect that staff would be in the best position of determining whether it makes sense to do an updated fee study. And, you know, if staff believes that it would be in the city's best interest, obviously I would support that. But I know that the way these fees are calculated are very complicated, is very complicated, so. But it was a very nice presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Nell. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Nell. And as troubling as this sounds, the last four days until yesterday, I was working with homeless veterans at the East Bay Standown in Pleasanton, at the Alameda County Fairgrounds. And their situation is so much worse than we, than we have here, where they have, you know, under $10,000 of welfare money to deal with. They're paying $800 a month for a single-room occupancy place, at the expense of food to eat. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one final question. The flexible setbacks allowance, setback allowance and the incentives, I'm curious if this applies to individual homeowners that, for example, are looking at building a second dwelling unit? Because I do, and I do see that the fee applies, or is, doesn't apply if they build, say, a secondary dwelling unit. Do they also get flexible setback standards to build that secondary dwelling?
No, they don't. That's, those incentives are typically given when you're going above and beyond the base requirement. And when someone decides and has the opportunity to construct a second unit on-site, there's specific setback requirements for that second unit. So it would kind of be inconsistent to allow that, given that there's specific setbacks designed to really kind of ensure that there's privacy and livability for that second unit, as they're typically, you know, provided either on the side or in the rear portion of the lot. That wouldn't apply for, in a single-family context.
Okay. Even if that homeowner went above and beyond and rented the secondary dwelling unit to a lower-income person?
It's just that it's exempt. So even if they chose to do that, it, yeah, there wouldn't be, we don't have an incentive for them to rent it out at the, I guess, below-market rate.
Yeah, I mean, they could always propose something. There's not something, because it's exempt, it's not specifically outlined in there.
No, I was legitimately just curious.
Any other questions for Nell?
Thank you, Nell.
Thank you very, very much.
Yeah, thank you, Nell. That was excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to reports, correspondence, and general information. A report on recent city council elections.
I would like to report to the planning commission that at the last city council meeting, the council did agree with staff's recommendation to appoint two members from the council to serve as ad hoc Development Standards Subcommittee for construction of new, single-family homes. And so Councilmember Mark Olbert and Councilmember Ron Collins will serve in those capacities for the life of the project. And our next step is to actually meet with them and start talking about the process that will unfold. And as I mentioned before, we are looking to have a first study session on lot splits with the planning commission on October 17th. So we're right now in the very stages of doing our public outreach and civic engagement, rolling that plan out. We're about to send out a very large mass mailing to every property owner who has a lot size of 10,000 square feet or more, and also property owners that are within 300 feet of those 10,000-square-foot lots. And we are encouraging the community, who has expressed an interest in this, to follow us on our website. The city has a Facebook page, a Twitter feed. We're also on Nextdoor. We've developed a website specifically for this effort. And we're taking emails, we're creating email distribution lists, but we also have incorporated a new topic under the city's e-notify system, so people can sign up under e-notify and select single-family lot splits, and they will receive a notification every time we have a meeting on this topic, whether it's a study session, public hearing, and all the way through city council. Because it's very, as you can imagine, expensive and a large effort to do the mass mailing, so we're going to do it once, and then, you know, make it very clear on the notice that we want people to sign up and follow the process. So it's the best way that they can stay involved. So if anybody asks, feel free to let them know that's the plan. But again, we'll have that discussion on the 17th. No action, it's just the first in a series of discussion. And as I mentioned before, I think it was Commissioner, or, excuse me, Vice Chair Silverman, who asked, you know, "Well, if the commission is ready to make a recommendation, can we do that?" And that's certainly, when the commission is ready, we can move forward with that. And that's all I have for this evening. Is there anything else?
Okay. Planning commission, comments or reports?
I just have one, actually not related to what you just said on noticing, but particularly thinking about the project we just heard, previous to that, the, oh, the dirt hall certification and grading at 1525. I feel like the larger radius in noting, in noticing requirements would have helped to give staff more leeway in that case. It would have helped to give builders more leeway in that case. And the public at large has been asking us to increase that radius. And planning commissioners have also asked. So I'm wondering, it seems like a win-win-win-win to increase the radius. I understand there are costs to it, but I still haven't seen an assessment of what those cost differences would be. And I'm wondering what we need to do to make this happen? Is it something we need to have a separate agenda item about, so that we can enlarge...
Is it something we need to have a separate agenda item about so that we can enlarge the radius? Or are we going to wrap this into the development design standards update?
We're going to be looking at that as... I mean, we've heard the commission make this comment before about increasing the radius, you know, whether that's this commission, the planning commission, or whether it's the RDRC. As we know, the planning commission has 300-feet requirement, and for projects going to RDRC, it's 150 feet. So, we're going to take a look at that as we look, I guess, a little bit more comprehensively at the development standards. And maybe through that process, we want to modify some of the design review process and procedures, and noticing certainly could be one of those. But in the spirit of really communicating to the public what is happening amongst all the, you know, various projects that are... Have started construction and will soon start construction, we've created a new webpage. And I don't know if we shared that with the planning commission, actually, but what I can do is I can send you a link as information. But we are working hard and with our construction coordinator to respond to people's questions about, you know, construction activity, grading times, construction times, and so forth. So, we're trying to put as much of that information as we can on this new construction updates webpage that we've created because of all the development happening throughout the community. So, we will continue to do that, and we'll pay close attention and make sure that we're giving the best information we can as it changes. But as far as the actual noticing requirements, we're still following the procedures that are outlined in our code. Certainly, if anyone would like to, they are welcome to say, you know, "I want to be noticed," and they can be added to a certain list. I think we've had a few members of the community who said, you know, "I just... Anything that happens around, you know, within the vicinity of where I live, can you please send me a notification?" So, we do do that to at least a few residents who have asked us to. So, if somebody...
I mean, I'm fine if it's coming up as a part of a comprehensive review. I just don't want it to get lost, I guess, in the many, many, many other concerns that I know the public has about design standards criteria.
Yeah, we have it on the list.
Thank you.
Correspondence?
None this evening.
Planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects?
None for this evening.
Okay. Are they really going to start demolishing Wheeler Plaza next month?
I heard that it's January.
Oh, I thought I read that it was next month, and I thought that was really interesting.
No, it's going to change... You know, the target has moved, obviously, but the last I heard was really the beginning of the year.
Okay.
And we can, you know...
No. No need to do anything. It's fine. It was... I'm here. It's easy to ask questions. I don't want to create work for you.
All right. Nothing else? Meeting adjourned.
Nice to see you again, Don. See you next time.